City Commission meeting for May 7th will come to order. Roll call, please. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham. Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Rhodes to do our invocation tonight and Christian will come up in a minute and help us with our Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, Christian. You'll be ready here.
Tell you what, tonight we'll do the Boy Scout prayer that you always hear at Philmont Boy Scout. More about really a supper, but we'll use it for tonight. Aren't you ready? For food, for raiment, for life, for opportunity, for friendship, for fellowship, we thank thee, oh Lord. Amen.
Amen. Do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Christian and he's with Troop One. He goes to Hindren Elementary School. He's in the fifth grade. Thank you.
And how old is Troop One?
I think it's older than a hundred right now.
You've got your veterans' bar? Your little bar that has a hundred on it?
Yes, sir.
When you get those, you ought to get one of those. Those are prized possessions.
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
No.
All right. We'll go into our workshop tonight if Chief Kyle will come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. Got a handout for you all this evening. Topic of my discussion and presentation tonight is in reference specifically to cost recovery. It's what I would call an increasing trend around the country where fire departments are getting creative because of funding issues, where you start to look at things where you could potentially recover some cost for the services that you provide. The thing that you, the handout that I have there in front of you is what we're specifically looking at. And there are several categories that are available for cost recovery purposes, but we're going to, we're proposing to specifically target three. And they are vehicle fires, vehicle extracations, and unauthorized burning. Now, we don't expect to, you know, I don't expect to recover enough to pay for my budget or anything like that. It's just a place for us to start, to look at, to see how it goes, to see if it's well received, and to see if we recover what we think we will off of it. We estimate that we'll potentially recover somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 to $25,000. We would use a vendor for recovery of those funds to deal with the insurance company for us. They typically charge or have a fee of 20% of whatever is recovered. So if they don't get anything, if they don't recover anything for us, they don't get paid anything for being on standby for us. This, the estimates came from the vendors that we talked to for that. State laws describes what you can bill for a response, you know, in the different categories that's, you know, the state law prescribes what you can bill for those types of responses. And you, the vendors are very familiar with what state law will allow you to do, as well as the insurance companies. It's very prevalent in some parts of the country, maybe not so prevalent in this part of the country, however, there are departments in our area that are doing it. And the fire service as a whole has already, always, almost always done this on some level. Typically, you've seen it more with hazmat responses than you have anything else because of the amount of resources that you expend in responding to that type of call. You know, you, that's been an accepted practice for a long time. Well, this is also an accepted practice, but it takes the local level to enact ordinances for the fire department to be able to do this type of recovery. Something that we would, we wouldn't expect 100% collection right off the bat and maybe even not at all, and would expect our collection rate to be a little bit lower as we were to initiate the program, because it takes some time to get up and running. You have to do training. You have to, you know, get, we have to get acclimated to the different points of information that they would require for us to submit in order to do the cost recovery. So we expect some time and some hiccups associated with that as, as the program was to get up and running. We would also have some training in the process that we would have to go through with the vendor that would provide to us in order to us make sure that we capture the information correctly and properly for them to be able to submit for. We see, there are some departments already in our area doing this now that I mentioned, Concord, Reeland, there's some Marshall County departments, some of our sister cities. I know my colleague in Owensboro, he's been, he's been proposing this for the last three or four years, I think. He's only collecting for hazardous materials responses at this time, however, they've entertained it every time he's, he's brought it up. It just hasn't reached a point that their elected body is ready to accept it yet. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not something that is well-received in all communities, but with the areas that I think that we're looking at, it's small enough and targeted enough that, you know, you're not looking at something that's exorbitant, it's a massive program, you know, we just start, we get our foot in the door here to see how this goes and to see how the program would be accepted. With that, I might entertain any questions that you might have.
I have a question about, who actually would pay the fee?
The insurance company.
Okay. And what about on an illegal burn?
That would be the individual.
The landowner would pay for that?
Yeah. And what I would expect with that is after we did that a couple of times, is our unauthorized burn calls would probably dramatically drop. I wouldn't expect very much revenue to be recovered from that in the long term. Once a program like that gets kicked off, it would, I would suspect that it would, it would draw up pretty close to nothing.
For the fire and the extrication, the insurance company would be billed?
That's correct.
Now, when you say unauthorized burning, we have that in the city?
Yes, we have an ordinance in place now that is, that does not allow burning except by permit only. And those are the instances that we're talking about where people go ahead and light a fire anyway and start burning without getting that permission.
Big burns, like?
Anything from brush piles to leaves. We still have people that burn leaves and we've had, you can't, you're not able to burn leaves in the city for years upon years.
Okay. Carol, do you have anything?
No, I'm kind of having this deja vu. Didn't we discuss?
We have discussed this before.
Yeah. I was thinking, didn't we do this before? We just never brought it for in ordinance form. We just talked about it.
That's right. And, and I don't have an ordinance before you tonight, but what, if, if you permit me to go forward, what I would bring back to you is an ordinance in form that we would have to adopt and then a, an agreement with the vendor that we would choose to do our recovery for us, for you to, you know, authorize an agreement to be signed with them to do that.
Okay. So, are we thinking about doing this for both residents as well as non-residents? Taxpayers as well as non-taxpayers?
Yes.
Okay. Do you see any pushback if you're a resident? Or, I mean, I guess I get the non-resident, person passing through.
Well, and you see these, you see these programs take on many shapes and forms and it's as expandable and contractable really as you want to make it. And the, you know, and I think I'm, I'm not doing my duty if I don't tell you that, you know, we should look at all of it. Easily understand if we want to back it down a little bit, but I think I have a responsibility to show you the whole picture rather than just part of the picture to begin with.
Well, and then the other, is it, so, for example, if, if I'm from Metropolis and don't live in Paducah, don't work here, none of that, and I have an accident, in other words, if I just were to have an accident and you didn't extricate me and I had no fire, but you still rolled and gave some level of service, would you foresee maybe that that might be a reimbursable expense?
Oh, absolutely. It is, but that's not what, I'm not recommending that in this initial proposal.
So it's not, there is no expense? There's no fee now for that?
Right. That's correct.
Just responding to a wreck?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, now, if, for example, the gasoline tank in my car ruptured, would that be sort of under hazmat where that would be?
It easily could be. We haven't done that in the past and, and I quickly recognize that I wish we had been doing it already because it's something that's been out there and an accepted practice for a long time. We make a lot of those. You know, it's a, it's a common occurrence, I have an accident, gas can't get damaged, leaking gas on the, or motor oil, or antifreeze, or any of those things are running out onto the ground. We have to, we have to do, take action to mitigate them and those things that I use to mitigate that and provide that service come out of my bottom-line budget.
You know, I guess I sort of get it.
Can't wash it down.
If you're not a, if you're not a taxpayer, you're just, it's just a dead expense of the city and, and you don't live here, you don't work here, I guess I sort of understand how we, we'll probably do some money from you, the plural you. I guess I want to think about if you're a taxpayer.
Well, those arguments have been heard, have been heard in this, in this scheme of proposal before. You know, double taxation is the words that people have, has been associated with it. Well, if, if there was enough, you could easily make the argument back, if there was enough tax money coming in, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So, we're, we're trying to, trying to be proactive about, to be able to continue to provide the services that we do. We understand, you know, we get the call that a lot of times nobody else does. It's for those unique circumstances when people don't know who to call, they end up with the fire department. And our brothers in blue do too, a lot of times. But we, we get those, you know, those abnormal, I would call them abnormal-type calls, when they don't know who else to call, they end up calling us.
I guess I'm a little confused. This will work just like, this, I'm really simplifying this, but no differently than if I were to go to see the physician and they filed it on my insurance.
Correct.
Bearing in mind that that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be some portion of the expense that could be borne by the individual.
Depending on deductibles and, okay.
And more likely than would in this day and age where deductibles are a little higher than they used to be. I want to mention a couple of things. One, this is an instance of a director responding to a expectation, I guess, to take a look at what opportunities might exist on the revenue side to bring additional money into the budget. Granted, there are differences between departments in, in the amount of those opportunities and where they lie. This is one that, as the chief said, has been out there for a while and maybe one of the more obvious ones. And to accentuate the point about paying a fee in addition to taxation, I mean, the chief hit it on the head. In an ideal world, taxation picks up the entire portion of it. If we had enough tax revenue, we wouldn't have to charge for the pool, or we wouldn't have to charge for a lot of other programs we do as well. So, this initiative falls under the realm of user fee and granted, it's a little more sensitive because it's a public safety and potential injury sort of thing, but fiscally, the principle is really the same. Certainly, we shouldn't have a concern about finding someone that's breaking the law, that's putting a demand on public services that are being paid for by the general public and taxpayers. And with respect to the other two categories, and as the chief said, there were a number of them looked at, we have the ability to hone in on a specific user that is a, how shall we say it, an infrequent user. Hopefully, nobody ever has to use those services at all, but the fact of the matter is, general taxation pays for the capacity being in place to respond when people needs, need it. And if the revenue doesn't go beyond that, then we have to look at it as a user fee. And, and that's just sort of where cities have been the last number of years, and I applaud the department for their creativity in recognizing this potential revenue source, but of course, it's up to the commission to decide if it's acceptable.
To, one final point for the paperwork that you have in front of you, just so you're not confused about anything you see. Down at the bottom where you say, where you see motor vehicle or MVA with injuries and laying on down, near the bottom, the last group of categories there, those were not included. Those were other categories that are available to pursue, but that I am not proposing to at this time. So it's just those three.
Answer me a question. This is just, it's sort of on the subject, but sort of not on the subject. Explain, when an accident happens, I always see police and fire. Is that, how does that happen?
Well, I might categorize it a little different for you to begin with. It's a common misnomer, they're called accidents, but they're really not. Typically, they're very preventable. So we refer to them as collisions, okay? Well, because the accident, using the term accident lulls people into thinking that, you know, there's nothing that could have been done to prevent it, and many times there could be. But as a part of those responsibilities, the police department obviously works the accident, provides the police report, does that type of stuff, but what the, the fire department does is we, we, we provide emergency care to those that need it. We extricate the person from the vehicle if needed, and then we're also handling the additional hazards of where the vehicles have come together. Typically, you, you've still got power on the car, you have the threat of fire, you have fluids leaking from the, from the vehicle that have to be mitigated or stopped in, in the cleanup process. We don't do the cleanup. The wrecker service is responsible for that, but we take care of all those other ancillary things that go on as a result of the collision. So it's not just all about providing emergency medical care. You know, there's all those other things. You know, we're, we're very often cutting battery cables and, and stopping fluid from leaking or getting into the ditch, or, you know, any, any other number of things like that.
If you were to look at the other second-class cities in Kentucky, I mean, is it, is it just customary to a collision that police and fire go together?
Yes.
Okay.
Very different lines of responsibility and duties that are needed to be performed and, and capabilities of equipment.
It is.
Yeah. You can't get a, I don't think you can get a police car big enough to haul everything I've got on an engine.
Does it always, I mean, even offender, I mean, is it always involved the fire department?
No. We don't respond to every motor vehicle collision. We only respond to reported motor vehicle collisions with injuries.
Okay.
And, and from time to time, we do make the occasional motor vehicle collision when you have the car smoking, or you have fluids leaking from the vehicle, things of that nature. And a lot of times that comes from the caller, comes from the police officers when they arrive on scene.
Of course, also, I suspect that the police, I mean, the fire department is much closer than the ambulance service just to physically get there.
Well, we used to be more so than we are now. In the last three or four years, Mercer Regional's made drastic improvements to their dispersment of their units around the community. So their response times are much faster. They're not running from a single location like they used to.
Reece used to be out there by the, and Mercy was not there.
Right.
Okay.
So, in 2012, you had responded to 263 motor vehicle collisions with injuries.
That's correct.
There was no fee charged?
Right.
That's just like service.
We don't charge for anything right now.
Okay.
Right.
So this would be something totally new?
That's right.
I remember the accident that happened on the curve up here with the tanker.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure, I don't know if you ever had the figures on what that cost in cleanup and?
We did recover some expenses from that.
Not only cleanup, but just the personnel that was there in the?
Oh, yeah. We had, we had a large amount of overtime. We had turnout gear that was ruined. We had, you know, a lot of miscellaneous materials that were used in an incident like that, and we were there for 12 hours easily, I think, way on up into the wee hours of the morning after that incident occurred. So, yeah, we, we, we had a lot of resources expended on an incident like that and of that magnitude that we, we did get some recovery from. And we used our hazmat statute to follow to get that.
Could we go to school on any other communities, you mentioned our sister communities in Kentucky, who've, or wherever, who've sort of done this and said, okay, here's what's working, here's what's not, you know, here's, here are the pitfalls?
Sure.
It might be interesting to see that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, what, what direction are we giving, Steve, tonight? To look into what some other cities are doing?
I'd like to see the experience of the cities.
Draft an ordinance too for us to look at?
It's kind of up to you. I can tell you that right now, for budget proposal purposes, this revenue is being projected into the budget. So, you're in a position to determine whether you agree with that or not. I mean, if you want to consider an ordinance ahead of the budget, that's fine. If you want to make that decision in budget time, and then we go whichever way you go then, that would work too.
Want to do that?
That way it works.
I think that's fine, but I would like to see what other communities are doing.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll look at what other communities are doing.
Yeah, there's a wealth of information out there about, you know, other types of communities, and I would, I would caution you not to only look at something in Kentucky because it's, it really is, it's across, it's a trend across the country, so.
Well, I'm sure that you've studied several, and you probably have a few that you think are?
You can probably name a few right now.
Well, I named, I named some right now. I did not, I followed, I called some of my colleagues to check, and I haven't heard back from them to see if they're, they're doing it. They had not been pursuant in the past, but I know there's, we've had discussions among our state professional organization, but everybody's looking for revenue. They're turning over every rock. So, some are doing it, some are, some are limiting what they're doing, but I'd be glad to come back with you of what's going on here and what we've, and some of the things that we're seeing around the country.
And the mayor, I would like to see it in the ordinance in draft form.
Or how it would function.
Exactly. The way it would function and people that fall through the crack. I mean, you know, there's lots of questions about that. Until I see it in draft form, I?
Why don't I come back with, with that data and with a draft ordinance for you to look at then? Would that be permissible?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I told the city manager a few minutes ago, we had a small collapse a couple of hours ago of a building at 12th and Harrison. It was Phyllis Hamm's structure there on the corner, part of the parapet above the roof line where an awning was attached to it, came down. So if you hear anything about that, or you see, you see some bricks in the roadway in that area, that's, that's where that came from. But the building is stable, it appears to be stable. It was just a, a small area there that was impacted.
Will that be closed for a period of time?
Just the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, just the sidewalk. We had to cut the power to our building because it pulled the service off, but other than that, everything, you know, the building's still functioning. It's just going to have to do some work to it. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Assistant Chief Montgomery. He, he got through the lucky straw to put this data together and very much appreciate his, his help and work in doing that, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to Lisa Thompson and her roof, roof stabilization program for tonight.
Mayor, Commissioners, how are you all doing? Good. You're good? I wanted to take this opportunity to talk to you all about the Roof Assistance Program that I understand a draft was put into your package over the weekend. So hopefully, you all have gotten an opportunity to read it, and if you have any questions, let me know. As you know, last year, we, for the first time, we had an application for a demolition of a rather large historic structure in our commercial core. And one of the things that came to light during that application was that it had some serious roof problems. And there were roof problems that had been neglected over a long period of time. And folks in the historic preservation world know that, or even homeowners, that one of the things that you really want to do first and foremost is to protect your house or your building by keeping the water out. It means having a solid roof and making sure that all the windows and doors are sealed. If the, you've lost the glass, just cover them up with plywood. Water is a terrible, dangerous thing to these buildings. And unfortunately, we, we lost the battle on the demolition application, but it brought to our attention and that of our design committee and some of our colleagues in Frankfurt that we really needed to look at what we were going to do to help stabilize and protect some of these historic buildings. And some of them are rather large, and the price to replace the roof or stabilize it is even larger than some of us can imagine. So the design committee set out to look at communities across the country and see what other kind of programs that they had. And we found a program in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, that we used as a model for this. And it was a place for us to begin discussions. But the one thing about the Rocky Mount, North Carolina model was that while their application was very simple, it had a max of $10,000 for a grant to help these roofs. And what we found is we started talking to some of the owners of these larger buildings, that $10,000 wasn't going to cut it, that that was not going to help them at all. So we had to sort of step back and say, okay, what's the real purpose of what, what is it we're trying to do? And what we decided is that we're really trying to stabilize some of these large buildings. Because if these large buildings don't get stabilized and we lose them, we're going to start to lose, you know, I've talked to you about that smile, and you don't want that big gap in your, you know, smile. We're going to start to have those over and over and over again. So first and foremost, we said, we want this program to target structures that are in need of stabilization. They need a new roof. It could be a structure that is slated for further improvement, but it could also be a structure that the intent is just to mothball it, protect it, keep it dry, and then wait for the property owner to have the opportunity to have a new owner come in and buy it, or until they can find the funds to sort of restore the building themselves. The draft ordinance also says that we're going to evaluate the applicants on need and on their overall completion of the application. Part of the discussions that we also had, and I would welcome your feedback, is, you know, how do we, how do we say who's going to get a grant and who's not going to get a grant? Do we look at their financial stability? Are they able to fix this roof on their, on their own, or have they just decided that they're not going to do that? And is there a way for us to entice them to, based on what their financial needs are? We also are asking for third-party construction estimates, and that we would like three estimates for the roof repairs. So that that away, the, the award is given on what the lowest bid is. And if you, as a property owner, decides to take the middle bid or the higher bid, that we will award you based on what the lowest bid is. Each eligible applicant, the amount that we would, the city would reimburse for the grant would be a third of the total cost. So if your roof was a $150,000 repair job, we would award up to $50,000, and that's the maximum award that we would give. But we also set the minimum at $50,000. So that the city's award would be $16,666 per structure. And again, that was in there thinking that our goal is to help stabilize some of these really large buildings, not the small, not the smaller buildings where the price to repair the roof isn't going to be as staggering as some of these larger buildings. So the forgivable loan amount would not exceed a third of the total building cost permit price, and that of the, when the roof repairs are made, it must, there must be a roof-proof, a leak-proof roof that would exceed a 10-year warranty. So those are some of the requirements that we would have on any of the roof stabilization that they do as a result of this grant. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Of course, always questions. So, you weren't here in 1972, so we're not trying to recreate downtown Paducah in the vision of 1972 when there was, I mean, I'm just putting it out there. I mean, you're trying to stabilize significant buildings? As if a building was, is not, I can't think what building that is, but it's not terribly significant in its architectural design, and that's one of the tech marks.
Yeah, I mean, I think that part of it is also, we have, we've been assessing all the structures that are in the Renaissance District, so slowly, we would like to go through and sort of say, this is a contributing building, this is a non- through and sort of say, this is a contributing building, this is a non-contributing building. And a lot of that is a function of their age. So, you know, the Ethan Allen Building, for example, is a contributing building to our downtown. Michael's Hardware is a contributing building. The Kresge Building, that's a contributing building. And all of those have really large roof replacement costs that are associated with.
But for example, and I'm not going to pick on this person, I'll probably alienate a constituent there, but the little red building that's across from, from the Gorish Cafe, it's a pretty modern building. Hands are, that's not on our radar. It's small, and it's not particularly historic. It's just a little red brick building that was probably built sometime in the 60s, I guess.
Right. But because it's also a small building and has a small footprint, the cost to replace that roof isn't as significant as the Kresge Property or Michael's Hardware Building.
All right.
And I think what we are trying to do is really target those really large properties where the property owners are having a hard time coming, you know, putting the funds together to stabilize the structure.
So what did your board say when somebody said, well, what about the moral hazard this puts out? Where, well, I won't do it. And I said, I'll let the city do it for me. Did you all have a spirited discussion about that?
Yeah. They, they have lots of spirited discussion, as you know. I think most, for most of them, the discussion really came about what's the city's role in, in helping a property owner that maybe has the means to do this themselves? And do we do it in a way that we use the program to incite or incent people to come and start new projects downtown? No. And that, you know, we would like to start working on the vacant buildings and then putting investment into those so that we can convert them into usable spaces. At one point, the draft actually included an incentive that if you, if you just mothballed the property and put a new roof on it, that you had to pay on the loan. But that if you improved the property and got a certificate of occupancy, then the loan was forgiven. And then that goes back to, okay, what's the real goal? If the real goal is to stabilize the buildings, then we probably shouldn't connect it to an occupancy permit criteria. Because, you know, we might have a property owner that wants to stabilize it and hang on to it, mothball it, but isn't interested in selling it, or nobody else wants to buy it, or, you know. But I'd love your feedback on that.
Well, I, I did notice that if they sell the property in less than one year, they have to pay.
They do.
Why couldn't we have that transferable to the next owner? Because if somebody's willing to spend their money, as well as, I guess, the city's, to stabilize it and get the building ready, it's, seems to me it would make it more attractive to sell. So couldn't we, why, why not transfer that to the new owner?
We could. We could.
It was just a thought about, you know, to me, the intent is to get them ready to fill, whether that landowner does it, or he makes his building more attractive to sell.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I think, I think from my point of view, we don't want to have them invest the money and then sell it and make a profit off of the investment that we've helped them make.
Which they would do if that, that became transferable. But it also makes the property, you know, I guess, if they were going to make the building, then if they were going to complete the building and make it ready.
Right.
Then I wouldn't have a problem with that, as long as that building is getting stabilized and finished out and commerce going on in it.
Right.
I don't know that, I don't know that that is exactly what's going to happen, because it could be used just to mothball the building, correct?
It could be, yeah.
But I'm, they would be holding on to it then. If they sell it, and that person is going to make it ready for either upper story living, or for retail and finish out the building, then I, I wouldn't have a problem, I don't believe, with it, that loan becoming transferable to that new owner, if they're going to take those steps.
Maybe just to identify some conditions for assign.
For signage, yeah.
Right.
It's been a weekend since I read it, actually. But I don't recall there being a square footage minimum.
There's not. No, it was basically just based on price.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should there be any requirements for need, or just for anybody?
I remember the $100,000.
Yeah. And that originally said that your liquid assets cannot exceed $100,000. So then we decided to change it to should not. Because if somebody were to take on a Kresge Building, let's say, that is a huge project. So, you know, to say that whoever does that can't have more than $100,000 of liquid assets, I mean, it just doesn't, kind of doesn't make sense.
Because you couldn't do the building if you didn't have that.
Right.
Should we, because it talks about downtown and lower town. Because to get this thing started, what if you just concentrated on literally the central business district of the core of the city of Paducah, you know, from 7th Street to the river? You're really say, okay, let's start here. And you could, I think there would be some exclusion. I don't think the churches should be, or schools, or political, you know, if, if I'm going to run for national office, for the President of the United States, have a political office downtown, I don't think that should qualify. I guess I'd like to see it tightened up, just so that we really sort of get that laser focused on.
Well, you've got like the Grand Bus Terminal Building, that needs a new roof. There's the DuBois Building, that's on Jefferson, that needs a new roof.
Okay. Well, you.
So you start, I mean.
You could, but, but from 7th Street down, I guess, I'm just saying you could, you could pick at the, I mean, there are not that many buildings. You could almost label them.
Well, the particular Renaissance district starts, where I refresh my memory on.
It's like 10th Street at Broadway, kind of the railroad tracks.
Right. Okay. So it's close, you're, you're talking about 7th Street, but it.
Yeah. But it goes, you know, it goes way down toward the Old Metzger Park, down where P and L. And, I mean, it's a huge area. I'm just saying, to control it, we might, at least in the initial phase, focus to those things that we are.
I mean, aren't we after preservation somewhat of the quote-unquote skyscape of downtown Paducah?
Yeah.
That's really defined much more narrowly.
And part of it, too, will just be limited by how much funds we have.
That was going to be my next question. That was going to be my next question.
Have a lot of money.
Yeah. It, it says the city of Paducah may make annual budgetary appropriations as it deems necessary. But how much are you going to ask for? What, what is your vision? I'm sure you've identified these properties. So.
We have, yeah. So the, the nonprofit, the Columbia Club, Inc., has in their bank account about $85,000 that was left over from the facade loan that has never been doled out. So that $85,000 is going to come back to the city, and that's going to be the first pot of money that will prime this program. And then we're looking to have an additional appropriations in the 14 budget for.
$50,000. So it's not a lot of money coming out of it.
And some of the money from the Columbia Club, you've gotten some donations, and the parking thing for a couple of years at the.
Yeah.
I mean, that wasn't just, I mean, there, there've been some other contributors to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, also, I think you really need to, to narrow it also. I mean, you might as well, in my view, say, that, look, this is, I mean, this is not for somebody who says, well, since I'm already doing this project, can I apply too? No, this is, you're really trying to get the guy who's, who's my age owns this building downtown, and his kids have already said, look, Dad, we don't want you spending our money on this building, so just let it go. You're really trying to get that guy a reason to say to his kids, maybe, look, we can get a little money from the city here, and get this building stabilized. Maybe someday you might want to move back to Paducah, or you might be able to sell this thing at some point. You're trying to give the person who's doing nothing an incentive to do something.
Right. Or the fellow who's on the fence about investing in downtown.
Exactly.
Is looking at all these buildings, you know, and says, you know, I can't handle this roof expense. I'd love to do this, but I need some help.
But the person who's already doing something downtown, sorry, it's for the person who's just standing there not, in my view. I mean, that's, let me ask you this. In your things about the madam program manager.
Oh, yeah.
Just as a thought, you've suggested that you'd be working with the inspection department. And I, here again, I'm just asking this, but maybe you could go over to Steve Urban's department. And I haven't asked Charlie, I haven't asked Steve, I haven't asked anybody this. But you could steal Charlie Doherty and say, look, Charlie, I mean, you're doing a great job on Fountain Avenue, and you might be a third person in, in this mix of what would work, or rehab, or a, a building we could put a roof on. I think you might be a great resource.
Well, you're right. I mean, in fact, we, we thought about putting in the language just a, a preservation specialist. So that would be, you know, it could be Josh, it could be somebody in the, you know, planning.
I don't think I see you up on the roof.
I have pictures of myself on roofs. Thank you very much.
Ladies shouldn't be on roofs of buildings. All right.
I can do roofs. It's underneath, underneath the house.
Oh. Oh, what about, okay, what about a person who, obviously, if you meet the criteria and you say that the building is, okay, obviously, things like back taxes, I mean, he has to be, those things, should that be in the?
Yes. Yeah, that, yeah. And that's actually a part of the application.
Okay.
They ask us, we ask them, you know, are there any other violations? Have they gotten anything from the inspections department? Are they delinquent on back taxes?
Okay.
We actually require them to give us, you know, copies of the deeds, insurance policies, tax returns for the last two years, how long they've owned the property, all those kind of things.
Good deal. Okay.
Yeah.
So basically, what we're doing is trading out facade loans or roof replacements?
We are, yeah. I mean, no one's taken advantage of these facade loans for a long time.
You go ahead.
We have two outstanding. One will be paid up in a year. And the other one that's outstanding has offered to go ahead and finish out her payment, sort of give us more funds for this, because she thinks this is so important. So.
And facade loans went for?
The facade loan was used at the Grand Lodge for windows, some exterior painting, those kind of things. And then 218 and 216 Broadway were also done using facade loan money.
Well, do you think it's because no one has asked for a facade loan, or there just hasn't been anyone start a building project that needed a facade loan?
I think it's a little bit of both, to be honest with you. I think there's also a reluctance to, to, to take the facades of some of these buildings and do the repairs that need to be done to them under the Secretary of Interior standards. And that's, you know, part of what needs to be done. So.
I mean, I know when I was on PRA, we had a few, before you got there, we had a few who inquired about a facade loan. And when you said, okay, but to get this, here's kind of this laundry list, and then their eyes kind of glanced over.
Yeah. Yeah. But all those things help maintain our historic core.
That's true.
And that's what helps us win awards, and helps us attract employers, and helps us attract tourists. I mean, so there's this balance of.
The only thing about it that bothers me is replacing a roof just to be mothballed. I mean, I guess then you have to go, what is the intent of the program?
Right. And if it's to save the building, we know that replacing the roof and making it watertight.
But I mean, how long could they mothball it for 20 years? I mean.
No, we should actually, I mean, there are mothballing ordinances where they limit, you know, if we're going to help you do this, you have five years.
I think you definitely need to do that.
Come up with some kind of development plan, you know? And the property owner agrees to that.
That's not really in here, but it's something that we could add. I mean, to me, I'd like to see it prioritized, where if it's a building that they're going to add the per story living, they're going to add retail and those kind of things. It would rank higher if you had to, and one's just going to be mothballed. Even though they both may need it, the other one would start to provide back to the city.
Well, yeah, it's kind of a question of how far you go. And I think that's a good idea, too. But the question is, do you go beyond a, you know, do you go from a concept plan to a detailed plan with a timeline? I think that's really the way you need to approach that. I, I think a concept plan would at least give the commission some assurance that the building was going to have purpose going forward, although it's hard to imagine somebody would acquire a building and make this investment without some purpose for it. But you can have intervening things happen like we have in the last few years, like the economic downturn. So.
Right.
If we get into the plan thing, we're, we're adding a whole new basis for this thing of criteria and review and all that. I'm not sure we want to do that down to detailed level. But some requirement that they identify what their plan is for, at least conceptually, I think is fair.
Okay.
All right.
I just have one quick, and you may have discussed it. I apologize, I just stepped out. Did you discuss a revolving loan pool as opposed to forgivable?
No.
That's what the facade loan.
Right. And what I'm asking essentially is, if you just loaned the money at a half percent interest rate, or as low as you legally could go, at least the money would be replenished back into the pool and continue to be there over time, so you could continue to make the loans. And it would perpetually stay.
I just don't know if, if the, the property owners aren't fixing the roofs because they can't get the money, or they just, I don't think it's a question of them being able to get access to money.
Hence why I think we might should charge some interest and keep it going.
You should do a combination, too.
Right.
Or some of it.
Or you could do, if it's, if you, if they mothball it, you could say that then there's a payment for that. But if your end goal is to get an occupancy permit, then maybe that's forgiven. It goes back to what's our goal.
Honestly, I don't think a lot of the roof problems we have downtown are because they don't have the money. It's because they never have prioritized.
Right.
Those major maintenance issues in their budgets.
Right.
I mean, and so then you're, you know, you're down to your roof leaking because you've spent it on other things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all.
You have direction?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, city managers report.
I have nothing further.
Any commissioner comments tonight? Sandra, you've had a great week, haven't you?
I did.
You could talk about your nice Avis.
My daughter graduated from law school. It's a big week. We'll be coming back to Paducah to be.
She's moving back here. That's what we want our kids to do.
Exactly. Very happy.
Any public comments? We have an executive session?
No.
All right. Then we are adjourned. Thank you.